Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the first meeting of the Honolulu Liquor Commission. We have no meeting minutes today to approve, so we'll roll right into our calendar. Calling public hearings, agenda item number one, application number two-three-dash-zero-zero-four-four-three from Noribar Honolulu LLC.
Good afternoon to our butler and members of the commission, Neil Gota, appearing on behalf of Noribar Honolulu LLC, appearing with me is Kang Dang, a member. We have no changes to investigative report.
Thank you. Ms. Rai?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters in support, applicants met statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Thank you, Ms. Rai. Is there anyone who would like to provide public testimony as to agenda item number one? Hearing and seeing none. Commissioners, any questions, comments, or shape of action?
Okay, I move we approve application number two-three-dash-zero-zero-four-four-three.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any objections, reservations, hearing seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries. Application number two-three-dash-zero-zero-four-four-three is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving into our license applications, calling agenda item number two. Applications number two-three-dash-zero-three-nine-three-six-dash-one through two-three-dash-zero-three-nine-three-six-dash-two-zero inclusively from Hong Kong Inc.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Keikiuchi for the applicant. I have no changes or additions to the investigative report.
Okay, so there's a new application pending, is that correct?
It's been pending for a while, and that's why we applied for the special license.
Commissioners?
Mr. Keiki, just a quick question on the floor plan. Where is the door entrance for the establishment?
The door entrance is on Y-Monastery, and there's a back entrance that goes through the parking lot. It's kind of hard to see off the diagram that you have. So if you see the front counter that's kind of angled between that and like a partition, that's where the front door is.
Okay, and so the back entrance that goes into the parking lot is not to let people in as well, or just the front entrance?
No, the front entrance, well, some people come in through the back because the parking is in the back. So the back entry is right next to the women's restroom.
Okay.
So that's where it is. This is run entirely like a Korean restaurant, a grilled restaurant, yakni, for lack of a better term.
All right, that's all the questions then. Thank you.
Okay, I move we approve application number two-three-dash-zero-three-nine-three-six-dash-one through two-three-dash-three-nine-three-six-dash-two-zero inclusive.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any objections, reservations, hearing seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries. Application number two-three-dash-zero-three-nine-three-six-dash-one through two-three-dash-zero-three-nine-three-six-dash-two-zero inclusively are approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number three, application number two-three-dash-zero-four-two-nine-one from Hawaii International Food Festival, Film Festival. Good afternoon.
Hi, Jeremy Amada with Events International along with Greg Johnson from Events International on behalf of the Hawaii International Film Festival.
So this is a one-day event on July 16th, is that right?
Correct.
The, I noticed the, on the floor plan, the entire premises is outlined in red. Is it going to be roaming with alcohol, or is there a designated area for alcohol?
Yes, roaming.
Roaming. And how are you going to handle security?
So we will have ten guards from the Hawaii detective guard, and they're, you know, retired HPD officers, military. I will also have two HPD that are already confirmed, special duty, and for personal security, probably five, just to do ID checking and wrist scanning for the event.
And where are you doing that, at the bars?
Right at the bar. And then the rest of the guards will be roaming throughout the event.
How are your ticket sales doing?
Uh, we're right about eight, eight-fifty.
Oh, so you're right at that.
Yeah, we're right at that location, yeah. Um, it's a, it's, they, I mean, the Hawaii detective and guard has donated their time to us, so it's a pretty great organization, the foundation.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Any other questions?
Um, the only questions I did have is like with it all being licensed, the areas that are like by the parking lot or other areas that are not like enclosed by buildings. What we, is there anything you'll be using to delineate the licensed space?
Yep, so we will have the bicycle racks to make sure nobody leaves with alcohol. And we have two guards at each location, entrance and, you know, entrance and exit as long as the HPD officer.
Okay. I mean, the only thing I would stress, I guess, is to make sure that those areas that have the wider open spaces, which you're going to be using bike racks or things like that to cover, make sure you have a little bit more security roaming those areas frequently.
For sure.
Those people are, I mean, we don't want to say it's going to happen and it's a family event, but we're also in this graduation season time, right? So younger kid, people will be out, and so we just want to make sure.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you. Does any questions, Rai?
I move we approve application number two-three-dash-zero-four-two-nine-one.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any objections, reservations, hearing seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries. Application number two-three-dash-zero-four-two-nine-one is approved. Thank you. Have a great event.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Point of order, Ms. Rai, we should call number eight first and then four.
Yes, please. I think it actually makes more sense to do it that way.
Yep, calling out of, calling out of order, agenda item number eight, request number two-two-dash-two-four-six-one-three from KHF LLC.
Good afternoon. Chair, Commissioners Terry Lee for the applicant. To my right is Kevin Haney, who is the principal of the applicant. Review, oh, no, this is the item eight.
So this is a permanent increase?
Yes, and it's actually just to include a liquor storage area that's a very small area.
Yeah, at first glance, I couldn't tell where the increased premises was from A and B.
It's that small.
Yeah. Okay, commissioners?
I have no questions.
Okay, I move we approve request number two-two-dash-two-four-six-one-three.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any objections, reservations, hearing seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries. Request number two-two-dash-two-four-six-one-three is approved. Thank you. Going back up to agenda item number four, transfer application number two-two-dash-two-four-three-six-one from KH Restaurants LLC.
Good afternoon, Chair, Commissioners Terry Lee for the applicant. To my right is Kevin Haney, he's the principal of the applicant. I've reviewed the investigative report and no changes.
Commissioners?
I have no questions.
I move we approve transfer application two-two-dash-two-four-three-six-one.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any objections, reservations, hearing seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries. Transfer application number two-two-dash-two-four-three-six-one is approved. Thank you very much. Calling agenda item number five, transfer application number two-three-dash-zero-zero-nine-eight-two from Dongnei Ohana LLC.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, I'm Min Namul on behalf of Dongnei Ohana LLC. On my right is Chan Okli, who is the member.
Thank you, ma'am.
No corrections to investigative report.
Thank you. Commissioners?
I have no questions.
And we approve transfer application number two-three-dash-zero-zero-nine-eight-two.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any objections, reservations, hearing seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries. Transfer application number two-three-dash-zero-zero-nine-eight-two is approved. Thank you very much. Calling agenda item number six, application number two-three-dash-zero-zero-four-one-zero from Red Elephant Thai Cuisine LLC.
Hello, Chair. Vice Chair members of the commission, Emmanuel Ziwakalam here on behalf of Red Elephant Thai Cuisine LLC. To my right is Member Somphorin Foley. We reviewed the investigative report, have no comments or edits at this time. I can answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners?
I have no questions.
Okay, I move we approve application number two-three-dash-zero-zero-four-one-zero.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any objections, reservations, hearing seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries. Application number two-three-dash-zero-zero-four-one-zero is approved. Thank you very much. Calling agenda item number seven, application number two-three-dash-zero-zero-four-eight-three from Anelakai Catamarans Inc.
Good afternoon, I'm Fariel Savio, I'm the vice president of Anelakai Catamarans, and it's the Nahu Kuhu Three, and there's no changes that we need made.
Commissioners?
The only comment I would like to make is, looking through all of the information that was provided, based on the other two catamarans, there has been a few violations here and there. It is spread over a long period of time, 2023 to 1995. Let's just keep in mind and keeping an eye on those things as we move forward with added this additional vessel, I'm assuming, because it's number three.
Correct.
Okay, that's the only comment I have.
I move we approve application number two-three-dash-zero-zero-four-eight-three.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any objections, reservations, hearing seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries. Application number two-three-dash-zero-zero-four-eight-three is approved.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Calling agenda item number nine, the request number two-three-dash-zero-four-one-three-zero from Platinum Partners Inc., DBA Crash Kitchen in Mearay.
Good afternoon, my name is Gary, he owns them, Platinum Partners.
Good afternoon. So you would like to amend your hours of operations, is that correct?
That's correct.
So Monday through Thursday, 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Friday through Sunday, 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.?
Correct.
Okay. Commissioners?
I have no questions.
I move we approve request number two-three-dash-zero-four-one-three-zero.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any objections, reservations, hearing seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries. Request number two-three-dash-zero-four-one-three-zero is approved. Thank you, thank you very much. Calling agenda item number 10, request number two-three-dash-zero-four-one-seven-six from 77.
Good afternoon, my name is David Fowler, I am representing Neil Nesbit, the president of 77 Inc.
Good afternoon. So you would like to renew the license and then place it immediately in safekeeping?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioners?
Okay, I move we approve request number two-three-dash-zero-four-one-seven-six.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any objections, reservations, hearing seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries. Request number two-three-dash-zero-four-one-seven-six is approved.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number 11, the request number two-three-dash-zero-four-one-zero-seven from Christina O'Hira on behalf of Waikiki Ambassador Hotel by Rome.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Christina O'Hira for the applicant. And to my left is Kelly Sanders, he is the area vice president of operations for Haikiki Hotels.
Okay, Ms. O'Hira, we have before us dated July 6th a supplement to this provided to us by the administration. Have you seen that?
Now, this is, it's an internal, it's an internal document. This is a, because this is a request, it's not treated exactly the same as a preliminary hearing or a license application. So it's just an internal from the licensing supervisor to the commission.
Oh, that could be, so I did get a call from Daniel today. I don't know if it, does it have to do with what we talked about?
I did see this.
But basically, we had submitted our application on June 13th, and for whatever reason, it still hadn't made its way to an assigned investigator. But I understand the front is reviewing our application now. But I think that might further, like, support our current request before you, so it's all good.
So, so I think it showed some discrepancies, the original letter had an April 19, 2023 date, and that was?
Yes, I confused it with a different application, with the, they both started with the A, that was the AC Honolulu application I submitted, this was the Ambassador, so I apologize, I mixed up those dates. But this was submitted June 16th, and it has not yet gone to Daniel. But I understand it will be with him tomorrow, or if not today, or did you get it today? Okay, tomorrow is when I expect it to be on his desk.
Okay. Thank you for clearing that up. I think that probably the more substantive points of this was the fact that the previous license was a restaurant license, you're applying for a hotel license.
Yes.
So the transfer typically is the same class of license unless otherwise approved by the commission.
Yes.
That's one. The second is that it seems as though that license had expired quite a long time ago, nine years ago or so. If you could speak to that as well?
Yeah, so the, well, so Kelly might have more knowledge on that because he's been more intimate with the hotel. But my understanding, before Kelly gets into it, is that the renovations are such that that same space wouldn't fit with the current service area. So that's my limited knowledge of it, but Kelly can go into the, more of the details about the closure and that sort of thing.
Yeah, we acquired the Ambassador in 2014 and have been working through a major $75 million transformation. The goal is to open in October of this year. We will have a full three-mill-a-day restaurant, but that is delayed and won't open until Q1 of 2024. So the main request is to approve the hotel license so that we can actually have a pool, bar, and restaurant service. Would be the only meal service until the restaurant opens.
And so that nine years sounds roughly correct. You acquired it around nine years ago.
That's correct.
Okay, so it went from this previous licensee to your ownership?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, I mean, I would note that this hearing is simply seeking waiver of the rule to apply for the transfer. We're not making any decisions on the transfer application itself.
Or the, the request to apply for a temp.
I'm sorry, temp, I'm sorry, that, that is.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off also.
Yes, so we're not making any decisions on the temporary license, only whether or not to request the ability to apply for it. Commissioners, any other comments or questions?
No, but I would like to make a disclosure that I am friends with Kelly, but I won't interfere with my ability to make an impartial decision, so.
So if I'm understanding it right, right, we're talking about basically in the future, right, putting in a temporary license for a hotel license for bar and pool, and then in addition to that later, a restaurant license for the area that would be turned into a restaurant?
No, the hotel license would cover the entire thing. And we're requesting to apply for a temp for the hotel license because otherwise we are unable to apply.
Okay.
Do you know, and this might not be within your purview of knowledge, but do you know the previous restaurant license, was it used simply as a restaurant or is it used for anything else with it?
I believe it was just a restaurant, it was KO's Thai.
Did the hotel have any other sort of room service or anything related to alcohol? Did they just limit alcohol to that one restaurant?
I think that they had a, a, a package license also for an additional general store that sold a lot of alcohol.
Questions?
I don't have any other questions.
I move we approve request number two-three-dash-zero-four-one-zero-seven.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any objections, reservations, hearing seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries. Request number two-three-dash-zero-four-one-zero-seven is approved.
So that is for both parts, one and two?
Correct.
Yes.
Got it. We are going to take out of order, calling agenda item number 20, Liquor Commission Assistant Administrator Henry White Sands Owner LLC.
Good afternoon.
Thank you. Anna Hira, Assistant Administrator, Liquor Commission. And I'm here with counsel for Y Sands Hotel. I'm just going to put a little bit of background information with respect to this document in front of you for review. This is a joint stipulation of the parties with respect to this hotel license. My experience in the past has been with a, another hotel license that had noise problems or persistent noise complaints. What happened in that proceeding, it was a formal petition to impose conditions and restrictions on the license, and everyone presented their documents and information and evidence. The commission then ordered the administration and the licensee to work together to formulate a plan going forward. So I suggested to Ms. O'Hira, and she agreed, that we could skip the adversarial petition process and move straight to the joint stipulation. And this is what we were able to produce in terms of a game plan going forward to address both for the commission and the licensee noise complaints associated with this licensed premises. So basically, this is just for you today for a review and possible input. As the commission approves us to go forward with this, we would place this on next week's agenda for approval. Then we would execute, then these conditions and restrictions would attach to the license only for the FY '24 license year. We would come back in six months, which I believe would be about January, to sort of report how things are going with the conditions and restrictions. After the end of the FY '24 year, we'll make a decision whether or not we will, if there's a need to continue, or if they'll just keep in place certain of the operational undertakings they have made, and then we can lift those restrictions. So this is basically for your review. We worked pretty hard. It was actually a fairly easy process. We did have a little problem with the obscenity part. But other than that, this was a relatively easy process coming up with various gives and takes on both sides of the table, so to speak. So we'd be happy to answer any questions. There's a lot of boilerplate, but basically, it's on, you know, the page three in the carryover is the conditions. So if, next week, if this is approved and executed, they would return with their license and we would just put like a legend on it saying, subject to conditions and restrictions imposed on such and such date. And the letter would be retained in the file. Then we'd be back in six months to report to you how things are going with these various operational adjustments.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rai. I do have some, some questions and comments. I think I'll start with the general comments, so moving outside of this agenda item in particular, but looking at the statutory structure for this, for this matter, Hawaii revised statutes, chapter 281-61. As a general comment, I do find this to be a rather extraordinary measure to take. And 281-61 can be construed rather broadly. It says, you know, the renewal of a license shall be granted provided that if just complaints from the public, reports from the commission's investigators or adjudications of the commission indicate that noise was created, and it goes on from there. But it seems pretty broad, so, you know, in theory, and I know that's not necessarily the case here, but in theory, you don't even need that many noise complaints to bring this type of measure. So I think 281-61 to me is a bit extraordinary and very broad. I know in this case, there were a lot of noise complaints, so this may be a little bit different of a matter. But I guess my concerns are, I haven't seen another case like this. I don't know if there have been any, you can tell me if there have been. But I haven't seen a renewal come up with restrictions like this on a licensee. So I'm wondering why it came up with this particular licensee, what, how many, you don't have to say a specific number, but how many complaints were there? Why was this so much different from other licensees? And then I would like, and either of you can answer that. And then I would direct to you, Ms. O'Hira, your counsel and you represent the licensee. So I want to hear some perspective from you on this process, what you thought of it, and whether your, your client is comfortable with the measures that are provided in this document. I presume they are because you're here, but I would like to hear a little bit more on that.
So I think, as to the document, you know, it was negotiated, and so they are willing to sign it. To be honest, this is the first licensee I've ever had where this has been imposed upon my client. So I agree that it is an extraordinary measure. But if that is a vehicle that we can use to prevent, you know, some other things that may be going on with this property, which I'm sure you guys are probably aware of, then the client is on board if it'll head off those other issues. But, you know, we, obviously, the client would prefer to not have conditions imposed on their license, because who wants that? I mean, no one wants that. But we are willing to sign it in an effort to, one, show that we're good citizens and we're, you know, cooperating with the Liquor Commission, and then hope that in the future, when or if there are complaints, they'll be processed consistent with this, you know, with the conditions here. But it is also, to be honest, more efficient, cost-efficient for us to negotiate this agreement and sign it than for us to go to a contested case hearing on it. And at the end of the day, that's kind of where the business folks fall out on it.
Could you speak a little bit more on that aspect of it, the contested case? And in particular, and I don't know if you know the answer to this, but in your client's view, were there a lot of noise complaints? Were they legitimate complaints, were they not legitimate complaints? And what would a contested case be examining?
Can I have one follow-up to that? Were you given as part of this negotiation the kind of number of complaints? And were they named or anonymous?
I did receive from Anna the approximate number of complaints. I didn't receive like the actual complaints to review. I'm sure I could if I requested them to be.
On request, we would have.
Yeah, to be honest, we did not request them. We are aware of certain individuals who complain all the time. But we are also aware of people who one-off complaint and, you know, they are in fact legitimate complaints. Like honestly, one time our bar manager forgot to turn off the outdoor speakers, and yes, it was 1:00 a.m., and, you know, yes, that was terrible, and they were chastised and retrained. So, you know, there are certainly legitimate complaints. Do we feel like most of them come from people with a particular viewpoint about people's lifestyles? Yes, we do feel like that's a driver. A couple weeks ago, we had protesters outside of one of our events. And you can imagine how crazy that is for somebody to be protesting. Basically, it was protesters outside of the Gay Island Guides pool party, which, you know, pretty intense.
And this does not address a situation like that. No, that's not intended to. So if I could just, well, Ms. O'Hira takes a little breather. Yeah, this is, at the end of every year, this is some, and a, and a formal analysis we do of complaint activity with respect to all of our licensees. And sometimes there are years when the, and there's not a specific threshold when, which we'll take action. But this one, with this particular licensee, it was the, the number and the, the, sort of the, almost the pattern of when these complaints are being lodged that we knew that if we did not take an action of some sort, we're going to come under criticism. And this seemed a good way to address both the Liquor Commission addressing those persistent chronic noise complaints and the licensee in a way that would hopefully protect both parties, as opposed to us being accused of doing nothing. And like I said, after the end of the year, we can evaluate and, because these are only meant for one-year duration. We have, I've never, I've participated in a number of these petition actions. I will tell you, the last hotel one that I did was a rather laborious procedure because every complainant will come down and want to provide testimony. And I thought we, we registered the number and the identity of those complainants and when we got them and what the nature of the complaint was. And I didn't think we actually needed to have that before the commission in order to come up with a solution like this. So, and you don't see it often because it really, and like I said, I don't have a threshold number, but we don't do this all that often. And this was specifically designed to avoid the contested hearing on it because then everyone would need to be bringing down witnesses and, you know, it'd be a lot more formal. This was just a lot less cumbersome. This was just a lot less cumbersome. And we skipped to the stage where we got to the last time I had to do this, which is go right to the joint stip negotiation.
So Ms. O'Hara or Ms. Rai? I noticed one of the stipulations was, in addition, the hotel will not permit entertainers or guests to be unclothed or in such attire, costume, or clothing so as to violate restrictions on nudity as described in rule, whatever. Were there complaints of nudity, which seems like you have to be in the facility to notice that? And is this kind of unique because it's only restating something that's already a rule of the Liquor Commission? Why was that put in there?
I'm not personally aware of complaints about nudity, but since I just footnoted directly to the law from a legal standpoint, it seemed like something we could agree to. But are you aware of complaints regarding nudity?
I'm quite sure that this is why that element went in there. It was actually a feature of the other hotel one, too, that there was complaints of impermissible nudity at the pool deck.
But again, I'm not, I mean, I'm not aware of any. But if we're just citing to the law, I think that's how I got over the hump from a legal perspective.
But Ms. Rai, there were actual complaints lodged of nudity at the hotel?
I believe it was a sim, it was like a strip show, is what it was described, as being observed.
We don't have a strip license, to be clear, though.
But that also doesn't go to noise disturbance?
Correct.
There might also be a noise disturbance in the complaint. But this seems to me that that subsection didn't, wasn't it directly addressing
The noise. I'll repeat that.
the core issue of noise disturbance. So I had the same question as Commissioner Hong, but why was that inserted? Because it doesn't seem to be addressing the primary concern. I do appreciate the client's position that on a cost-benefit analysis, it may be easier to do this. I am concerned, however, people should be able to make complaints if there's a lot of noise. And that's a legitimate complaint for anyone anywhere to make. The comment that you had, Ms. O'Hara, about making complaints because those particular people didn't agree with a certain type of lifestyle is concerning. And I don't want restrictions placed on a license if that's going to be used as a vehicle for those people to further complain. So that's a policy concern of mine is, if that's going on, then are we only fueling that to some extent? So were there any discussions between the parties on what that looked like? Whether it was true, if it was a very small portion of complaints or a very large portion of complaints? Do we have any idea how to, and that's a difficult thing to gauge, I understand.
Yeah, you're going to have to just rely on, since she did not request a copy of the, is that that particular behavioral complaint did not feature into the noise complaints? It was just noise, and I guess apparently the strip show.
Yes, I mean, without us like going through each complaint and the names and then trying to match up like a name with a face, and was that person part of that protest outside that day, right? And you can imagine that would be time-consuming for anybody to undertake. And I wouldn't even honestly expect the investigators here to undertake that type of analysis. But that's probably the work that would have to be done for anybody to really know, like, whether a person who called in a complaint had other reasons for complaining other than noise. But I would say there is definitely a subset of the community that feels that there are people with political points of view who are calling in noise complaints as their way of, you know, taking a jab at certain events. But we, can I prove that? No, it's just conjecture.
At some point, when it's appropriate, I'd like to move to go into executive session to consult with the board's attorney on questions and issues or matters pertaining to the board's powers due to privileges, immunities, and liabilities, not at this time when we're kind of complete with this discussion.
Okay. Very good. That's a good idea. Ms. Rai, typically on a complaint, so if a complaint is lodged with the agency, we would typically follow up with people going out and doing meter readings? Or I mean, how, what would the process be to see if that complaint was legitimate?
Regardless, I mean, ideally, if it's not the, I think the problem may be with being able to respond contemporaneously with the event, that is a problem. By the time a complaint is lodged and we're able to respond, oftentimes the event is over. My understanding is the protocol is that the licensee will always be told that a noise complaint was lodged on such and such time, so that they're aware that a complaint was lodged. But it's not always that we are able to be there at the same time that a event is going on where a noise meter reading could be conducted.
I do have like two points I wanted to make. One feature of this, though, that is appealing to my client is that, you know, what Anna was telling me or what Ms. Rai was telling me was that, you know, if somebody called the hotline to complain about noise, then whoever answers the phone will say, did you call this number first? So that also kind of takes the edge off of it, right? And these people can first complain to our assigned staff person, who can then immediately address the noise issue, as opposed to us never getting the complaint, but then the commission getting 10 phone calls, right? So that's, that is one feature that we find appealing because it will head off investigators coming like to every party because of complaints.
Yeah, the idea is to not force, but have the complainants work more directly with the licensee because they're the residents of the neighborhood. And if there's a designated individual and a number, they are first to call there before they contact us.
And then the second thing I wanted to say was, I know this is, it seems extraordinary, but I thought in our previous conversations, you had mentioned there are other licensees actually that are being subject to this fiscal year, or?
There was another candidate, and I decided that we were going to just go forward with White Sands this year. Because the quantum of complaint numbers wasn't the same. But they have been advised that they were under consideration and are trying to avoid having to go through this at all.
Oh, okay. So we may be the only one then for this fiscal year?
Yeah, this fiscal year, you're, and just for the record, we did agree to let the licensee be renewed, subject to the undertaking that we're going to appear after the FY began. And if restrictions and conditions that we negotiated or agreed to, then they will bring back the license for endorsement or whatever you call it.
Ms. O'Hara, this is a minor point, but do you know if the hotel permits music in the pool area after 10:00 p.m. on a normal basis?
No, parties shut down at 10:00.
Okay, so that's just establishing you're already?
Yeah, so in fairness, the conditions are all things that we are either doing already or, you know, would be implementing nonetheless, given the current complaint situation. So that is one reason that made it palatable. And then the only negotiation that went back and forth like more than once was the bit about the profanity. But I think we've got a good list there. If you have other words, we can talk about them.
Was that part of the complaints was foul language?
I will admit, there was a DJ who really liked the F-word. He has not been invited back.
Yeah, this is actually something that counsel for White Sands inserted when we're sort of crafting the original document.
So you've kind of answered some of my questions, Ms. O'Hara, but I guess a couple of quick ones I would have. Out of the five stipulations, decibel levels, I mean, obviously, we're talking about like a 60 decibel level. Have you guys had instances where it's been above that?
Well, so the, so I think the way it's worded is they would take a baseline reading, which could absolutely be above 60 anyway because it's Waikiki street level. And that the overage would go from that baseline. Because as a practical matter, almost everywhere on street level at Waikiki is above 60 decibels. So for a violation, we think it should be above, you know, the three above the base, not necessarily 63 because you could just get a violation walking on the street.
So the, one of the reasons for the reference to the rule is, in addition to that baseline, I thought it would actually benefit the licensee to also mention that there would also have to be compliance with the duration and ambient noise levels that are cited in the rule. Because if there's not, if it's just a, if it's less than two minutes and 20 minutes or whatever the duration is, or less than so many decibels above the ambient, there would not be a noise violation. So that's, I added that language as we're kind of working with that particular clause.
I guess, I guess more my question was more at, does your client have situations? I'm assuming it's part of whatever pool parties there were, right? That the noise level was pretty excessive. And I know you previously said someone forgot to turn off a speaker at 1:00 a.m. in the morning on the outside. So I'm just, yeah, I just want to make sure that when we're looking at these things, right? These are some of the things that did happen and were out there as complaints.
So we, I think there's a current violation with a decibel reading that, you know, I think we did a denial of that earlier. So I think there are instances where we've been accused of having, you know, loud noise, but we don't necessarily agree and we don't necessarily believe the decibel readings were taken in an appropriate location. But, you know.
And then, I mean, you did say already that there was some ADGs that like use specific words. So obviously, you know, those going over a loudspeaker might not be the most appropriate things, right? And then, if I'm correct, I mean, the way the hotel sits, right, it sits on the hollow eye. The hotel faces the seaside, the hotel itself, but then the pool itself faces the backside of the hotel, correct? So there is a few high-rise condos that sit back that way, right?
Yeah.
Okay, no, no, I mean, just trying to picture whether somebody could or couldn't see something based off of the following portion of E, like a party that might have been going on and whether it was or wasn't able to see that, right? I don't know, but again, 10 o'clock, up to 10 o'clock in the evening, you know, that area is somewhat, you know, I'm not sure, but family areas as well, I don't know. So I'm just thinking of those things as well.
Yeah, it's interesting. We get a lot of noise complaints actually early evening, like 7:00, 8:00. It's kind of bizarre. I feel like, you know, and like 2:00, I think, or like.
In the afternoon?
So I think COVID has created an interesting environment where people are home more and working from home more. And I understand that and I'm sympathetic to that. But at the same time, you were living in Waikiki next to a hotel. You had to have known that when you chose that as your home. Not that I'm justifying excessive noise, but regular hotel noise, to me, when you choose to live in Waikiki, is a little extra, just in my opinion.
Thank you for answering your questions. Thank you.
Just historically, since I've been here like almost forever, it feels, in Waikiki, the vast, vast majority of our noise complaints are from hotels. And it can be like a very common one is hotel luau shows. Fortunately, those last two hours. It's the nature of the neighborhood.
So I'll move to going into an executive session to consult with board's attorneys. I added a very similar. To consult the board's attorneys on questions and issues on a matter pertaining to the board's powers, duties, privileges, immunity, and liabilities.
Motion in a second and the objection to reservations here and seeing none, I also vote, the motion carries. We are now in executive session. Okay, we are back on the record. Thank you for giving us time to be in executive session. Commissioners, any further comments on this matter?
Yes, I would like to state that this is our first type of this hearing. So we went to discuss kind of the procedures for moving forward. And one of the procedures is that as a commission, we can accept or reject sections of the stipulation. I would like to move to make a motion to remove from section E the final statement, in addition, hotel will not permit our entertainers or guests to be unclothed or in such attire, costume, or clothing so as to violate restrictions, et cetera. And my, the purpose of my statement is that it's not germane to the sound and noise complaints.
Second.
Is there a motion in a second and the objections or reservations here and seeing none, I also vote, the motion carries. The language referenced in the motion is stricken.
Now, one of the other things that we discussed here is, in the spirit of transparency around this procedure, this was an open hearing and it was adjourned, and the public could come in and provide comment. We are going to be meeting on this next week, and certainly we welcome comment at that time. As this would, this licensee would be the only licensee to have this stipulation based on it, I would like to direct the administration to provide information on the top three violators to kind of see why this one licensee stands out amongst at least the top three violators. And so to have that as part of the public record for discussion at our next hearing.
I'd also like to just thank the parties. I think it's difficult when you negotiate a stipulation like this to try to find something that's in the best interest of both parties and can help move this matter forward and help solve the problem. And I think, hopefully, many of these provisions do that, Ms. O'Hara. I think some of these provisions, and I certainly hope that they can help and equip the licensee to be able to receive complaints directly, work with people directly, vet complaints to see what's coming in, where it's coming from, and what the reasons behind it might be. So I hope this gives you some ammunition as well to be able to monitor the complaints a little bit more directly. And as a general matter of law, we do appreciate when parties try to stipulate and agree on things together. And so we like to honor that as much as possible. We're not making any decisions today like Commissioner Hong just mentioned. We will set another hearing next week. The public is again welcome to comment on this stipulation. We would welcome any comments they would have. And I believe those are all my comments at this time.
Could I just, just a clarifying remark? So the information that we're to provide for next week will be for FY23. The top three licensees in terms of numerosity of complaints, specific to noise or just in general?
Let's just do specific to noise.
Okay, got it. Are we required to disclose the name of the licensee?
No.
Oh, I, okay. What we will identify is class, kind, and category.
That would be great.
That would be helpful, too, to see where we are in the pack.
Right.
Yeah, precisely.
Hopefully not at the top.
Okay, so we will, we'll return next week with that information and the joint stipulation in final form with the indicated language in condition paragraph E stricken, the final sentence with respect to nudity.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rai. There's no further actions they can impose on this matter?
Sorry, just have a question. So we don't sign it before next week? Okay, sorry, just just making sure.
After they approve whatever the final form, then we can just circulate the signature pages and then that will be the end of that. We just have to approve the form. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, commissioners, can I have a type of action for agenda item number 12?
Motion for adoption of findings of fact, conclusions of law, decision in order for agenda item number 12.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second and the objection to reservations here and seeing none, I also vote, the motion carries. Findings of fact, conclusions of law, decision in order is entered for agenda item number 12. Similarly, may I have a motion for agenda items number 13 through 16?
Motion for adoption of decision in order for agenda items 13 through 16 inclusive.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second and the objection to reservations here and seeing none, I also vote, the motion carries. Decision in order shall be entered for agenda item number 13 through 16 exclusively. Okay, we are going to move into our Okay, we are going to move into our adjudications. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Thomas Snaf, Secret Deputy Corporation Counsel, on behalf of the City of County Punta Lula.
Okay, calling in agenda item number 17, LCV 21-0022, Black Alley Cafe.
And good afternoon, Commissioners Guy Matsonaga, on behalf of Back Alley Cafe, who's representative is present, she's to my right. Her name is Linda Thai, T-H-A-Y.
Good afternoon. This has been continued to today's calendar hearing for contested case. Are we ready to proceed with contested case hearing this afternoon?
We're ready.
You're ready?
Yes, we're ready.
How about you? Okay.
Before we begin though, I was, I was speaking to my client on one, on a case, I don't know what, what number this is on the schedule. But as to LCV 20220060, on that particular matter, after going it over with her, she'd like to change her entry of a plea to a no contest. I know that's disappointing, we want to do a hearing, but we'll do that on that one.
Is that in relation to the books and records being provided?
That is correct.
Okay.
And that's the third case for today.
That's the agenda item number 19.
So when they call it, they, they'll ask for a reentry plea. And then you can just do it at that time. Unless you want to guys call it out of order.
Well, I was hoping to get rid of the ones that we're not going to go to contested hearing on.
Okay, is that only agenda item number 19?
There is another one, and both would, would be entering it with an explanation.
Yep.
And I think that's going to be a big difference.
Yep.
The one that we would like to contest, however, is the no manager on duty. That would be 2002.
Correct.
So that would be agenda item number 17 that we just called, the one that you would like to contest?
No, no, that's the next one. You just called 0022. And are you contesting that one?
0022.
That's the annual employee list in one.
No, that one would also be a no contest with an explanation.
Okay, so you're only contesting one today.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so that, that has been called. Would you like to change your plea?
I'm sorry, which one did we call?
The agenda item number 17 has been called.
Okay, and that is 00?
0022, the annual employee list.
And that's the one, as I said, we're going to be entering a, a no contest with an explanation as to this one.
Okay.
Okay.
Motion, motion to accept the plea of no contest.
Second.
Just been a motion in a second and the objections, reservations, hearing seen none, I also vote aye, the motion carries. Please accept it.
Mr. Nasen, your recommendation for number 17?
Uh, this violation occurred on October 30th, 2020, when licensee failed to submit its annual employee listing. This is licensee's first violation. The recommended fine is $250.
Sorry, your last name again?
Mine is.
Yours.
Oh, I'm sorry, Matsonaga.
Matsonaga, sorry. Found it down somewhere and it's not here now. Mr. Matsonaga, explanation for number 17?
Yes. So Ms. Thai, she is now a part owner of Back Alley. She's just taken over. We're, we're kind of just working through all of these things when they got the violations. This is a, this is somebody who, you know, should have, but wasn't completely familiarized with the rules. She was working with an accountant, and they no longer have the accountant that they had back then, who was supposed to have guided them through the necessary steps and the things that they had to do to fulfill their duties on having this, this liquor card or this, this liquor license. As such, you know, I, I think there were issues that could have been contested. However, being that she is entering a no contest, we ask that the commission take that into account. You know, this is the first time violator, it's not like they're doing it repeatedly, which would be then something that hasn't been corrected. So I, in, in this particular case, based on the circumstances, I would, I would respectfully ask a letter of reprimand on this particular one. We now have notice, we're going to keep up with that. And if we could just move on from that.
If I may add, so this was for the 2020 annual employee listings, and they submitted their 21 and 22 listings on time.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you. And I would note that this was in the middle of COVID, it was October 2020. So there's probably added complications to the COVID as well.
Sure, yes. Definitely, thank you.
My question was going to be based, my question was going to be based on it being in COVID, that time. Were they, was Back Alley even open, serving products, I mean, or being like a restaurant? Because I mean, during certain times in 2020, some places were not even open.
Were you guys open at that time?
We were, we were closed multiple times, and then open, reopen, and closed.
I guess it was off and on, yes.
Okay, so as, as, you know, I'm going to state, you know, we are, seem to be getting finally over all of these violation things that happened during our COVID time periods, right? And I understand those were very trying times at that time. So I am going to make a motion to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item number 17.
Second.
Just been a motion in a second and the objections, reservations, hearing seen none, I also vote aye, the motion carries. A letter of reprimand will be issued for agenda item number 17. We are going to go out of order and call agenda item number 19, LCV 22-0060, Black Alley Cafe.
And once again, good afternoon, Commissioners Guy Matsonaga, excuse me, on behalf of Back Alley Cafe, also present is Representative Linda Thai. Once again, on this particular matter, we're going to be changing our plea to a no contest plea with an explanation as to this matter.
Do you waive reading of the charge?
We do.
Motion to accept the plea.
Second.
Just been a motion in a second and the objections, reservations, hearing seen none, I also vote aye, the motion carries. The plea is accepted.
Mr. Nasen, your recommendation for agenda item number 19?
So this violation occurred on June 30th, 2021, when licensee failed to provide its accounting records for inspection. The licensee's accountant at the time had submitted the books, but they did not retain the Z-tapes to allow our auditors to verify the information. This is licensee's first violation. The recommended fine is $500.
Mr. Matsonaga, your explanation?
Yes, excuse me. In this, in this particular case, once again, these are new business owners. Ms. Thai was sending, they, they, okay, first of all, they, they changed the system. Now they have a POS, which is a completely different, I guess, accounting or receipt system. Back in the day, they had these paper receipts in which they mailed to their accountant, and he apparently wanted them to input it. And they thought that he was going to input it into the books with these paper receipts. As such, it wasn't done. They've caught the problem. My suggestion, I don't know if they have the same accountant, but as I was telling Ms. Thai outside, my suggestion would be to kind of can the accountant, but I mean, I mean, and not, not to be in this position again. I believe this is the first violation, and they rectified it by installing this entire new system as of April 2022, was it? April 20?
2022.
Yeah. So they put this whole system in, that way it would. I believe, I, I saw your phone, I think it was 2022. But they've installed this whole system so that this sort of violation would not occur again. So they're, they're taking, you know, steps, baby steps, to rectify the situation as, you know, it is a learning curve. So we'd, we'd ask for a, a little bit of leniency on this, this matter.
Mr. Matsonaga, was the POS system approved by the liquor commission?
That, I don't know.
I think we were given time to put in the POS system.
I can't honestly, I can't answer that. But if it had to be, I hope they did. I, I don't, I don't want to lie to the commission, I, I don't know.
Where's that accountant?
So I do have a question. I don't know if, Mr. Matsonaga, you would know, or if Mr. Nasen or would know. So were, when they asked for the June 30th, 2021 books, last four years, did, was it just one year that was missing? Or was it all four years that were missing the Z-tapes?
I, I am not sure, but I believe it was all four years because their accountant said that they just didn't retain the Z-tapes.
Okay.
But you were not in ownership for all of those previous four years, were you?
Not this time.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Um, does it, I guess I, I'm going to say I don't think they've asked for the 2022 review because it would be, I'm assuming they would go back four years and they would be missing three or whatever. So I was going to ask if they've done something in 2022 because it said they put in the POS. I wanted to find out if we're kind of up to par, but okay.
Not that I have any record of.
Okay, um, I do understand you're, you're, you are now taking over this business. I think what we need to make sure in going forward, right, is that if you still have your accountant that you were talking about now, you may want to be pretty chastised to him because basically they should know what they're doing in these jobs because that's what their job is for you, okay? But also, right, I mean, for it to be four years, it is hard for us. So my motion is going to be to issue a fine of $250 for agenda item number 19.
Second.
Just been a motion in a second and the objections, reservations, hearing seen none, I also vote aye, the motion carries. A fine of $250 will be imposed for agenda item number 19.
Well, he's going to run the contested part because I don't know that, that will yet. I'm working on it.
So we will now call agenda item number 18, LCV 21-0202, Black Alley Cafe.
And once again, good afternoon, good afternoon, Commissioners Guy Matsonaga, on behalf of Back Alley Cafe, who's representative, then the Thai is also present, she's to my right.
Okay.
You waive reading?
Yes, we will.
And we are prepared to proceed with our contested cases.
And I think we can make this pretty brief.
Okay.
Do you intend to call any witnesses?
Yes, Ms. Thai.
Okay, we would ask that the witness excluded rule be put into effect then.
Okay. I see in the folder for exhibits, there's only prosecution exhibits, is that correct?
That is correct.
So for agenda item number 18, there's prosecution exhibit A.
That's correct. Documents have been bait stamped, P01 through P011.
Okay. Any objections to the prosecution's exhibit A?
Exhibit A is the citation, that's what I have.
No, it's the whole report.
It's the whole report, I believe.
I would, I would do a, I would do an, yes, I would object, only because I would like to question the witnesses on this. I would say a lack of foundation on that part. I mean, we do have a right, I would argue we have, we have a right to question any witnesses rather than any written documents that we, we have no idea to the veracity or the accuracy of it. And there are a couple of questions that I would have had regarding the issuance of the citation as well.
Okay. I think for prosecution exhibit A, we will overrule the objection and admit it into evidence. I do understand your points, and we will ascribe that to the weight of the evidence.
Understood.
Uh, do you have any witnesses?
No.
No witnesses, okay. You have one witness and no evidence, in forms of physical evidence?
Not as far as physical, physical evidence. I would just have her testify and I would, the, the problem, well, we'll get into it and let, let's see if, just going to raise an objection when I can.
Do you have any objection to the witness?
Uh, no, her name was timely disclosed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are going to apply the witness exclusionary rule until the witness is called?
But I think it's the only witness, so I think we could just go straight to her. If you want to waive openings, just get straight to it.
Because, yeah, because you don't have any evidence to present, I suppose. Okay.
Nope, I'm just strictly arguing on the, on the record here.
Okay. So then we'll move into our opening statements. Prosecution, you may begin.
Uh, so this is a clear violation. On May 5th, 2021, the licensee failed to have a manager in charge of the premises. When commissioners arrived, as the evidence will show, the employee there at the time said that the manager had left for the evening. As the evidence will demonstrate, as required by the statute, the licensee did not have a management authorization letter on file for the employee that was there that night. And they subsequently filed it after the date of violation.
Okay, opening statement?
Yes, in this particular case, yes, these, these two investigators, Dallas Estabilio and Ms. Magia, I believe it's Brenda Magia, entered the premises. They go straight up to the bartender, who they assume is the only, is the only person in the bar. They did not, well, and when they, when they do question him, he says, oh, the manager left. He did not know that Ms. Thai, who also carries a manager, not now, but at that time, carried a manager blue card, was in the back doing some books. This is realized only after Mr. Subdilier, is that who's asking? Chad? The bartender Chad, went in the back to put the, violation that he received from Inspector Estabilio on the desk. That's when he realized that Ms. Thai was there. You know, Ms., Ms. Thai was obviously a manager. Here, here lies the problem. I do have proof that she has a blue manager's card that was valid on the date of this offense. However, she has it on her phone. So I wasn't quite sure how I was going to upload that to you guys. So I don't know if this commission would be open to seeing her valid manager's blue card on that particular date, and/or if this commission can take judicial notice of the fact that within the records, she did have a valid blue card on May 5th, 2021.
Okay, so are you, are you asking us to admit that into evidence?
I am, yes, I am. Even though, and I, I do apologize, I did not upload it as I was supposed to. I just didn't want.
Okay.
We have no objection based on the failure to timely disclose, but we would object based on relevance. I mean, whether or not she was a blue card holder, it doesn't prove that she was there that night, on the night of the violation. You know, if they wanted to, they could have submitted Ms. Thai's time card showing she was on duty on the night of the violation, and they submitted no such evidence. So on that fact, we would object based on relevance. However, if the commission is willing to accept it, we would stipulate that she was a registered manager on the date of the violation.
Okay.
Just that that doesn't prove she was there that night.
I would, I would overrule the objection and admit it into evidence, but if there's a stipulated fact that she is a blue card manager, I don't necessarily have to do that.
Yes, thank you.
So there's a stipulated fact on the record that Ms. Thai was a blue card, blue card holder at that time?
That's correct.
At the time, yes.
Yes.
Okay. You may continue with your opening statement.
Yeah, um, and if I may just address that, the objection as to Ms. Thai, if, if Ms. Thai is on duty, she's not an hourly employee. You know, she's, she's just, she has an interest in, in the business. She doesn't clock in and clock out. As such, those are for employees that are, are hourly. So I'd ask that the commission not take that as evidence of proof that she was or was not working, because that's certainly not relevant to her position. And that's my opening statement.
At this time, we would move into the prosecution's witnesses and evidence, but you don't have any witnesses.
Nope, we don't.
Would you like to reserve everything for closing statement?
Yes.
Okay. You may call your witness.
Thank you. Call Linda Thai.
I'm going to swear you in. You raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony to give today's hearing would be the truth, whole truth, nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Get a speak up, okay?
Okay.
Okay, please state your name for the record?
Linda Thai.
Okay. And were you on duty and employed, or not employed, but working at Back Alley Cafe on May, I'm sorry, for, then May 5th, 2021, at approximately 7:00 at night?
Yes.
Okay, now, let's go back. That's two years ago. That's two years ago. How are you certain that you were working on May 5th, 2021?
I was there. I came in and I said hi to the employees.
No, no, no. How, I'm talking about a specific date. I'm talking about May 5th. How do, how do you remember that you were working on, on, on May 5th?
Well, I remembered it because we got in trouble, trouble that day for the citation.
Okay, and what was that citation?
For no manager on duty.
Okay, now why would you remember the citation and, and that date?
Well, I remembered it because I was there and Chad gave me the citation.
Okay. What did you do upon Chad giving you the citation?
I kind of yelled at him.
Did you try to run out and see if you could catch investigator to, to let him know?
Yes.
Okay. Now, when you, if you could describe the layout, when you first come into Back Alley, is there, is that where Chad's bar is, right in front of you?
Yes.
And the management office, is that where you were?
Yes.
Where would that be in relation to the bar? Was that in the back? Was that in an open area? Is it a closed door?
In the back.
In, in the back?
Yes.
Okay. And did any inspector come and, and knock on the door to see if you were there, or anybody was there?
No.
Okay. Okay. Then once again, even though it's in evidence, it's, it's clear, you did have a manager's card on that, on May 20, on May 5th, 2021.
Yes.
Okay, I don't think I have any further questions, so.
Okay.
Just one question, what time did you go off duty on May 5th, 2021?
Off duty, I think I wasn't off duty that day at all.
Well, you just, you just testified that you were working at approximately seven o'clock at night, correct? So what time did you leave that night?
I left at closing time.
And what time is that?
At 1:45.
1:45 AM the next day, on May 6th then? Okay, no further questions?
Any rebuttals? Okay, um, since you have no other witnesses, would you rest of this time?
Yes, we would.
Okay, we will move into closing arguments, that prosecution, you may begin. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, commissioners have questions for the witness.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, I forgot.
No, no.
Please go ahead, finish your laundry.
Okay, so, um, I know that you had stated that you worked at, started at 7:00 PM and that you left at 1:45 AM. Was there any time during that time period that you stepped out of the bar, whether it to pick up something, to get something from your car, any of that time period? Or were you in there from 7:00 all the way to 1:45?
I was there the whole time.
Okay, thank you, that's the only question I have.
I have a question, um, how frequently do you go from the manager's office in the back to the front to help out or to check in, see what's going on? Do you, do you go back and forth or do you stay in the back, what's your routine?
I usually go in there to do like paperwork and then I'll come out.
Do you recall that night, I know it was a long time ago, but do you recall that night if you were going back and forth between the manager's office in the back and the front?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, you may step down this time.
Sorry. Get your attention.
I know, I apologize, I apologize.
No, okay.
Okay, so city, you may present your closing argument.
Thank you, um, so the purpose of, of the rule requiring licensee is to have a manager in charge is so that when the liquor commission shows up and they need to talk to somebody who has decision-making authority, there is somebody there who is registered and authorized to act as a manager. The simple fact here is that the commissioner, our investigator showed up there that night and the employees that were there could not provide a manager who had authority to make decisions. Now, I will note that Mr. Sol Deliere, Sol Deliere, the bartender that was there that night, I will note that he came back just a few weeks after the violation with a manager's authorization card, um, and, and he registered with authorization at that point. However, the fact that we asked for a manager and he couldn't produce one, um, is, is a clear violation of the rule. And that's it, thank you.
Closing argument?
This is just a mistake of fact here, that's, that's exactly what, what happened. Chad, the bartender, I guess when Ms. Thai came in, didn't, didn't realize that she was the new manager taking over the shift. Makes that erroneous statement that there's no manager on duty when in fact Ms. Thai was there. Ms. Thai remembers this event because even though she's pretty calm right now, on that date, she was pretty livid that she gets a citation for something that she didn't do. And that's why she can independently verify the May 5th date. I did want to question the inspectors to see whether or not they did, in fact, just try to see whether or not they could verify Chad, the bartender's statement, or whether or not they just came in, asked a question, the guy goes, hey, I don't, I guess we don't have a manager, and walks out, which is what happened. They, I'm, I'm saying they didn't do their due diligence, it's a mistake of fact here. And on this particular case, that's why we're contesting, we ask, do you find in favor of the respondent? Licensee, thank you.
Commissioners, any final questions?
I have a final question, so bartender Chad, how long has he worked at Back Alley Cafe, or Back Alley Bar, sorry? One year, two years, a lot, three years, any idea? I mean, I guess what I'm looking for is, you know, a guy who's a bartender, right? And I mean, I understand maybe he didn't look to see if you were there, but they also supposed to know the rules that they gotta find, you know, if someone comes in and asks for a manager, I gotta go say, find out if there is somebody here or not here. Now, if he's a brand new bartender, you know, maybe that gives me some weight. If he's been a bartender for 27 years, I'm just trying to find out how long he worked at Back Alley Cafe, or Back Alley Bar, sorry.
Well, he wasn't there that long.
Okay.
May I, may I comment on this, I don't know how appropriate my comment would be, but I did meet with one of the other partners in Back Alley and I, I asked him as same as that company, why don't you can this guy, he's not the brightest guy. She wants to can him, but the other partner won't let it, let her, even though he's, like I said, he's not the brightest guy, but he's very reliable, was what I got. So I think we might have to train this guy a little bit better. As I said, I just started taking over the cases for Back Alley, so, um, as I said, I'm trying to see what I can do to get them in a good, a better situation as I understand it, what needs to be done. You know, I'll get up to speed on the liquor rules and I'll try to help them if they want me involved. But I would ask in this particular case, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll put things in effect where they come in and ask for a manager, the first thing they do is go in the back or, or find one rather than just say, straight up, the back, nobody's here.
See, I have a question, a point of clarification, I, I don't know if I heard this in your, in your statement or not, was there a shift change? So Chad was in the front bartending, was there a manager in the front that left, leaving Ms. Thai there, or was Ms. Thai the manager the whole night?
There was, at one point, there were two managers, there was another manager on who did leave, so maybe that's why he thought, oh, the manager left. But Ms. Thai, and that's why Ms. Thai was kind of focused more on the bookkeeping that, that day rather than, because she had another one and this is pretty, I don't know what time the shift changed, what, what time was the shift changed? Was it, was it around seven or was it right before or was it right after?
Right before.
So it was just a, I guess a tidal wave of things that could go wrong and it did.
Commissioners, any other questions?
No, I don't have a question.
Okay, uh, the commission will deliberate.
Thank you.
Okay, we are back on the record, thank you for giving us time to deliberate. Commissioners, do we have a type of action?
Oh, I move that we find the charges not sustained.
Second.
There are motion in a second and the objections reservations here and seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries allegations are not sustained.
I would like to make a comment, make sure that Chad knows who the manager is on duty and lets know, because, you know, people are gonna come see him first as the bartender.
Absolutely, as I said, you know, we're taking this all in right now and we're learning from our mistakes and it's not gonna be repeated, thank you though.
Even briefly checking the manager's office would be highly recommended.
Yeah.
You better talk to Chad.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, we're free to go, thank you. Have a good night, thank you.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number 21, Liquor Commission Rule 3-81-17.4 Delegation of Additional Duties to the Administrator or Designee.
Okay, I provided you with a copy of some proposed additions to the existing list, uh, which has not been, has not been added to or amended since July of 2019. I've listed those and basically, uh, we checked these against the 281, HRS 281 to confirm that these actions are, are ones that are not designated as actions that require action at a public hearing. Of the list of items there, actually particularly if we're missing means due to quorum, the important ones would be numbers one and seven. So with respect to the approval of temporary licenses, currently I have delegated authority to approve temporary license renewals, but I've not had the ability to approve the, the initial temporary, so that would add this to this, the existing list. With respect to the number seven, reduction of license premises, actually that statutory section refers to increase or reduction of license premises unless there's gonna be a significant public impact. I've reduced the delegated power to just the reduction of license premises, as that is unlikely to have a significant public impact compared to the increase. What I propose to do with, with respect to these, with the delegated authority actions is for every month, we'll keep a log or a list of the actions that were taken pursuant to this delegated authority and provide that to you the following month, so you know what actions I have taken. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Oh, in case you're wondering, the number six, license applications not requiring a public hearing, and there is like a little paragraph of them. Basically, these are downgrades within a, a class to a lower, kinder category. Same class, like a restaurant, uh, restaurant general to a restaurant beer and wine. I would be able to approve those administratively. All these actions are intended to sort of facilitate the processing of, uh, license applications and licensee business before the commission. We will provide you with a list of those activities the following month, so you know what actions we have taken. We can make it part of the board packet also, which should provide disclosure to the public. Happy to answer, if you approve this list today, what I will do is update the existing list, which is attached to the, the, the 2019 list and then circulate for signature, it'll have an approval date as of today.
So the, the one through, items one through seven that are identified on the document that you provided, are those the seven actions that we would be delegating?
Well, yeah, you're, you're gonna add those to the existing authority that I have under the, the July 18, 2019.
Correct.
Actions.
Correct. I think that's a good list, um, commissioners, any other questions?
I agree that it's a good list.
And I will also retain, some, sometimes you do, I've obviously, we have, uh, have delegated authority to approve nonprofit specials. Occasionally, some will be brought before you because of the type of event involved, the size of the attendance or whether or not, since the commission is the only body that can impose conditions or restrictions on a license, that's another reason why something might be actually referred back to you. And I will retain that authority for this, the additional list.
So do you need a motion to approve this list?
Yes, I do, thank you.
So I move that we approve the memo on expanding processes and approvals not requiring a public hearing.
Second.
There are motion in a second and the objections reservations here and seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries. The items outlined in the July 3rd, 2023 internal memo are approved and delegated.
Thank you very much.
Calling agenda item number 22, Liquor Administrator Administrator Vanus, Mr. I.
I don't have anything to add to the short report that I circulated earlier today.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. I? Uh, we are adjourned.